I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its manifold blessings.
Please. Hawley, here. Hawley, here. Pullos, here. Here. Here, Vieda.
Here.
Here, Belado. Here. Belado, here. Rita. Rita, Abson. Donahue. Donahue, Abson. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here.
Here.
Osling, here.
Here.
Pitman, here. Johnson.
Here.
Johnson, here. Johansson, here.
You're glad to get us mixed up.
Thompson.
They get you mixed up with the...
Thompson, Abson.
All the time.
Proust, though. Proust, yes. Ten present.
Thank you very much. We move on now to the presentation of the general proceedings. I need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of October the 11th, 2016. We got a motion by Alderman Hawley. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye.
Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you very much. Council?
You are all welcome to this evening's meeting. I would like to remind you that the purpose of the meeting is for the deliberation of the city council and the mayor regarding city governance and business. If you intend to speak, please want to be recognized by the mayor, encouraged to quote you, announce your name and address. Please be further advised. Comments may be limited to three minutes or according to the appropriacy personnel proposed.
Thank you very much. Name and address.
Carol DePace Green, 2731 Orchard Street in Blue Island. Blue Island has been involved in the Jawa for many years. Most of the taxpayers are under the impression that the Jawa is over with. We have not received regular reports regarding the status and what's going on with Jawa. No reports have been given monthly, though expenditures continue, and Blue Island is currently being sued. We've got no information regarding the lawsuit, and the lawsuit's been going on since 2013. It's interesting that our representatives are not representing us. It's interesting that the case was up in court today at 10 o'clock at the Daily Center. No Blue Island representatives were there. No attorney was there to represent Blue Island. The case is moving forward. It is only continuing to cost Blue Island taxpayers money. The next court date is December 5th at the Daily Center. We do need to have representation, and a law firm was identified as representing Blue Island, and they didn't show up. But I was there. What can we do to get something corrected with this? From the beginning, I explained Brett Postal, Joe Ledke, we're going from town to town trying to sell this project to anyone to get any bites. They finally got bites. I explained not one drop of water would come out of Whiting. Not one drop of water ever came out of Whiting. The taxpayers are still paying for this in terms of legal representation and the case that continues at the Daily Center.
And yours?
Yes. What can we see moving forward?
We'll look into it.
Thank you. Can we get regular reports besides...
If there's something to report, sure.
Well, certainly, the things that can be reported on are the next court dates that the case had not been settled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, I have the pleasure, Mr. Hawley. Meet me by the podium, please. I didn't do it. Again, as mayor, as I'm approaching the podium, again, what an honor it is and it was to work with this gentleman who is standing to my left, not only when I was an alderman, but more specifically as the mayor of the city of Blue Island, and the responsibilities that he willingly took on to become one of our directors and fulfill that obligation to the fullest, giving it 110 percent. I'm saddened to be standing in front of all of you because of what I'm going to read, a letter that I received from him, but again, it's been 32 years for the city of Blue Island. And as mayor, the present mayor, I thank you on behalf of the city council, on behalf of the citizens of Blue Island, and everyone that you touch working as an employee for the city of Blue Island. I'm going to read to you the letter that we received on October the 21st, 2016. Again, it's called entitled Retirement Letter. Dear Mayor of Argus, please accept this letter as my formal retirement letter. I have had the pleasure of serving the city of Blue Island over the last 32 years, and I repeat that, 32 years. Listen what I'm going to say. Throughout my time here in Blue Island, I've worked as a laborer, truck driver, heavy equipment operator, water operator, superintendent of the water department, all the way up to ending my career with the city as the director of municipal services, a position that I was honored to hold. As a lifelong resident of the city of Blue Island, I've seen firsthand all the improvements the city has made over the years, and I'm honored to work for the city and contribute it to all its success. Incidentally, Mr. Robert Hawley, Director of Municipal Services. Again, Mr. Hawley. Mayor of the city of Blue Island, congratulations. Congratulations. We here in the city of Blue Island work as a team, and I specifically want to thank our treasurer, because he's the one that's always into the little details, Mr. Belado. And this award, this plaque, is for you, and it reads the following. Again, it has our Blue Island blue, correct?
Cubby blue.
Cubby blue, yeah, guy heart, guy heart. There you go. It has our logo, "Established 1835 Retirement Award Presented to Mr. Robert Hawley in recognition of your 32 years of dedicated and excellent service to the community and citizens of the city of Blue Island," with my signature and name, Mayor Domingo Vargas. Again, you deserve this and much, much more. Continue. Don't forget us. Give us advice. Whatever help you can give us, we will take and listen to you. Again, this award is for you for your 32 years of service as an employee for the city of Blue Island. Congratulations. Thank you. We're not leaving yet.
I knew you were gonna...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. How can I get out so easy?
You wanted to prepare something, but it just isn't there. Come off the cuff. So many people I have to thank, first and foremost, my family putting up with me for coming home crabby, coming home middle of the night. Not coming home in the middle of the night, middle of the night calls. Thirty-two years sounds like a long time, but it was a flash. I remember my first day. I'll never forget it. I'll never forget you guys, to the administration, the staff, everybody I worked with, my coworkers, guys down at Public Works, and especially the Rita family when I started here, and that big booming senior voice. I got the pleasure to help him, his wife, and his family, and they took me in as part of their family, and I am forever grateful. And I am grateful for working for Blue Island for 32 years, and I continue to live here. Now I get to be part of the peanut tip gallery. Thank you.
Somebody have the camera, though. Did you take one already? Can we take one with the family? Right, please. Come on.
Let's hire them.
He needs to make money. He eats a lot of food.
There you go.
Yeah, I don't want to spend all your...
No, good, good. You can sit there. There you go. There you go, there you go, there you go.
All right, guys, there you go. Two times. Again.
Okay, Robert, congratulations.
Good pleasure. Good guy.
Will you come check the water station?
I'll be around.
Yeah, sure does.
I'll be right here.
My alderman.
Under his mayor's announcements, don't forget, everyone, we have Trick or Treat this coming Monday from 3 to 7. Be generous with the kids, watch out for the kids, but before then, October the 29th at the Rec Center, 3 to 5, Trunk or Treat. And I repeat it, Trunk or Treat. We have a list, in fact, I have a list that's working in coordination, again, everybody working together, Blue Island Park District and other organizations, but it's primarily the Park District. The list that I have right now in front of you, 26 people, families are participating on the Trunk or Treat for 2016, okay? And our list, this list is continuing, this is going to be in the parking lot with John Rita at the Rec Center. Again, don't forget about that. Any bids?
No bids, sir.
City courts business?
We do have one thing we need to do. We got a by the Black Party request on Elm Street from Union to New Street that was held on October 15th from 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
We got a motion by Alderman Hawley. We have a second by Alderman Pullos. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Thank you very much. City Treasurer, can you report?
Your Honor.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Committee reports, Community Development Committee?
Your Honor, our next meeting is on Wednesday, November 9th at 7:00 p.m. at the Council Chamber.
Thank you. Financial Committee?
Yes. Need a motion for approval of payroll for October 7, 2016, for $305,350.40.
I have a motion, a second by Alderman Belado. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to make a motion for approval of accounts payable for October 19, 2016, in the amount $360,047.94.
I have a motion, second by Alderman Vieda. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you.
Resolution approving agreement for Phase 3 construction, committing the necessary matching funds.
Got a motion, got a second by Alderman Town Halli. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you.
A resolution authorizing execution of agreement with Prairieum Technology Group LLC for technology support services.
I have a motion, second by Alderman Pitman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you.
A resolution approving agreement for Phase 3 construction, committing the necessary matching funds.
Got a motion, got a second by Alderman Town Halli. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. And Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pitman.
Aye.
Pitman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, sir.
Thank you.
A resolution approving agreement for Phase 3 construction, I did want to just say that was for the Calcent Trail Project. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Our next meeting is November 1st at 6:30 in East Annex.
Public Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, Your Honor, our last meeting was held on October 11th. Present or director John Rita, Chief Jim Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Commander Kevin Sisk, Alderman James Johansson, Alderman George Pullos, and myself. Present as a guest was Marcia Stone. Absent were Alderman Dexter Johnson and Alderman Nancy Thompson. The meeting was called to order at 6:00 p.m. A motion was made by Jim Johansson to approve the minutes of previous meetings, seconded by George Pullos. All in favor, motion passed. There were no citizens' concerns under the fire department. The fire department had 287 calls since September, 201, were EMS calls. 173 patients were treated, 159 patients were transported, 45 patients refused transport. They responded to 13 general fire alarms and 23 minor fire alarms. They responded to 22 auto aid calls, most of which were from Calumet Park. They had 22 calls to man the station. They received six mutual aid response calls. Average response time was 5.3 minutes. Medical reimbursement services for September was $35,129.9. During the month of September, the fire department was called out on one apartment fire in Posen and one warehouse fire in Alcip. Under general information, new firefighter Patrick Smith started September 19th. The crew participated in an evacuation drill at Prairie Green. Numerous school fire drills were conducted. The crew attended numerous Black Parties in St. Benedict Fest, and the crew participated in Alcip hazmat box alarm training. Under maintenance, engine 2123 is still out at fire service. Under fire prevention, fire prevention inspectors inspected, they did 14 annual inspections and re-inspections, two license inspections, and no planned refuse during the month of September. Director John Rita expressed that the fire department has caught up with many fire inspections on businesses that were not in compliance and have not been inspected in several years. Under training, the training division completed 498.24 hours of training for the month of September. Under events, the winners were chosen for the fire prevention poster contest, and the winners were given a ride to school and a fire truck. Under grants, the 2016 AFG grant was applied for 12 lead monitors and a grant application for a new fire engine. Under police department report, the police department began 600 compliance checks for Halloween to ensure the safety of our children. The police department answered 2,541 calls for service, including 246 business premise checks, 62 were liquor establishment checks. Under statistics, there were 85 alarm calls, all unfounded, two armed robberies, one unfounded, six residential burglaries, one unfounded, three well-being checks of seniors, 10 shots fired calls, four were unfounded, 91 domestic disputes, and 463 traffic stops. Total money collected for the month of September was $31,161.17. The police department patrolled 18,041 miles. Under liquor establishment calls, there were three fight calls, three subject removal calls, one disturbance call, and one battery call for the month of September. Under community policing, the community policing unit conducted range qualifications for the police department. They were requested to assist a senior residing in the 2500 block of Walnut. They were requested to assist Eisenhower High School with the security for football games, and the police, the community policing unit addressed 20 nuisance complaints filed by various city representatives. Under injuries, there were no injuries reported in the month of September. Under training, the entire police department was trained in de-escalation tactics on August 30th and September 1st. Under events, the police department assisted with the Run For Your Life 5K at St. Benedict's. They assisted with St. Benedict Fest. The Christmas Light Parade fundraiser was held on October 21st. Droid Take Back Day was October 22nd. The Shredathon was held on October 22nd, and as was mentioned earlier, Trunk or Treat will be at the Rec Center on Saturday, October 29th. Under the 911 Center, total calls for September are being reviewed to separate emergency calls from call-ins by police and fire. The 911 Center currently has three supervisors and 10 full-time dispatchers. There are two part-time dispatchers and two in training. Three 911 supervisors attended a three-day supervisor course in Woodstock. All dispatchers received monthly one-hour power phone online training. Two dispatchers attended active shooter training. The new uniforms have been selected, and work continues on policies and standard operating procedure manuals. Under monthly health and sanitation, in the month of September, 22 health and sanitation inspections were done. All businesses inspected were found to be in compliance with state and local laws. Tom Malyut attended a meeting with the South Suburban Health Council and a webinar by Illinois Department of Public Health. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Johansson asked about fire inspections for schools. This is the first year that the state will not be doing school inspections, will be the responsibility of the city. Alderman Johansson asked about the police department patrolling alleys. Alderman Pullos asked about complaints concerning the Boca Bar. Issues will be addressed by Director Rita and Deputy Chief Cornell. There was an extended discussion about enforcing liquor license requirements. Alderman Johansson had expressed concern about the safety of the Fremont Street Railroad Crossing. We are currently awaiting a response from Metro. There's a motion to adjourn by Alderman Johansson, second by Alderman Pullos. Meeting was adjourned at 6:42. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November 9th. I'd like to make a note that that's a different day. We usually meet on Tuesday, but that's election day, so we'll be meeting on Wednesday, November 9th at 6:00 p.m. in the East Annex.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Judiciary Services Committee?
Your Honor, our next meeting is going to be November 9th at 6:00 p.m. here in the East Annex.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
We met on Thursday, October 20th, and we got a few ordinances and damage claims. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending certain provisions of the City of Blue Island Code regarding administration, personnel, and appointment of city officers and officials.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Pullos.
Aye.
Pullos, aye. Vieda.
Aye.
Vieda, aye. Belado.
Aye.
Belado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And finally, a resolution authorizing execution of lease and maintenance agreement with Harris Golf Cards for the golf carts at Maintenance Service and Maintenance Services.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Um, the resolution approving the agreement for the Phase 3 construction, I'd like to just say that was for the Calsete Trail Project. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, our next meeting is November 1st at 6:30 in East Annex.
Alderman Health and Safety Committee?
Uh, yes, Your Honor. Our last meeting was held October 11th. Present or director John Rita, Chief Jim Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Commander Kevin Sisk, Alderman James Johansson, Alderman George Poulos, and myself. Present as a guest was Marcia Stone. Absent were Alderman Dexter Johnson and Alderman Nancy Thompson. The meeting was called to order at 6:00 p.m. Motion was made by Kim Johansson to approve the minutes of a previous meeting, seconded by George Poulos. All in favor, motion passed. There were no citizens' concerns under the fire department. The fire department had 287 calls in September, 201 were EMS calls. 173 patients were treated, 159 patients were transported, 45 patients refused transport. They responded to 13 general fire alarms and 23 minor fire alarms. They responded to 22 auto aid calls, most of which were from Palladium Park. They had 22 calls to man the station. They received six mutual aid response calls. Average response time was 5.3 minutes. Medical reimbursement services for September was $35,129.9. During the month of September, the fire department was called out on one apartment fire in Posen and one warehouse fire in Alcip. Under general information, new firefighter Patrick Smith started September 19th. The crew participated in an evacuation drill at Prairie Green. Numerous school fire drills were conducted. The crew attended numerous block parties in St. Benedict Fest, and the crew participated in Alcip hazmat box alarm training. Under maintenance, Engine 2123 is still out at fire service. Under fire prevention, fire prevention inspectors inspected, they did 14 annual inspections and re-inspections, two license inspections, and no planned reviews during the month of September. Director John Rita expressed that the fire department has caught up with many fire inspections on businesses that were not in compliance and have not been inspected in several years. Under training, the training division completed 498.24 hours of training for the month of September. Under events, the winners were chosen for the fire prevention poster contest, and the winners were given a ride to school and a fire truck. Under grants, the 200, I'm sorry, 2016 AFT grant was applied for for 12 lead monitors and a grant application for a new fire engine. Under police department report, the police department began sex offender compliance checks for Halloween to ensure the safety of our children. The police department answered 2,541 calls for service, including 246 business premise checks, 62 were liquor establishment checks. Under statistics, there were 85 alarm calls, all unfounded, two armed robberies, one unfounded, six residential burglaries, one unfounded, three well-being checks of seniors, 10 shots fired calls, four were unfounded, 91 domestic disputes, and 463 traffic stops. Total money collected for the month of September was $31,161.17. The police department patrolled 18,041 miles. Under liquor establishment calls, there were three fight calls, three subject removal calls, one disturbance call, and one battery call for the month of September. Under community policing, the community policing unit conducted range qualifications for the police department. They were requested to assist a senior residing in the 2500 block of Walnut. They were requested to assist Eisenhower High School with the security for football games. And the police, the community policing unit addressed 20 nuisance complaints filed by various city representatives. Under injuries, there were no injuries reported in the month of September. Under training, the entire police department was trained in de-escalation tactics on August 30th and September 1st. Under events, the police department assisted with the Run For Your Life 5K at St. Benedict's. They assisted with St. Benedict Fest. The Christmas Light Parade fundraiser was held October 21st. Droid Take Back Day was October 22nd. The Shredathon was held on October 22nd. And as was mentioned earlier, Trunk or Treat at Blue Bay Direct Center on Saturday, October 29th. Under the 911 center, total calls for September are being reviewed to separate emergency calls from call-ins by police and fire. The 911 center currently has three supervisors and 10 full-time dispatchers. There are two part-time dispatchers and two in training. Three 911 supervisors attended a three-day supervisor course in Woodstock. All dispatchers received monthly one-hour power phone online training. Two dispatchers attended active shooter training. The new uniforms have been selected, and work continues on policies and standard operating procedure manuals. Under monthly health and sanitation, in the month of September, 22 health and sanitation inspections were done. All businesses inspected were found to be in compliance with state and local laws. Tom Elliott attended a meeting with the South Suburban Health Council and a webinar by Illinois Department of Public Health. Under Alderman's concerns, Alderman Johansson asked about fire inspections for the schools. This is the first year that the state will not be doing school inspections. Will be the responsibility of the city. Alderman Johansson asked about the police department controlling alleys. Alderman Poulos asked about complaints concerning the Volca Bar. Issues will be addressed by Director Rita and Deputy Chief Cornell. There was an extended discussion about enforcing liquor license requirements. Alderman Johansson had expressed concern about the safety of the Vermont Street railroad crossing. We are currently awaiting a response from Metro. There's a motion to adjourn by Alderman Johansson, seconded by Alderman Poulos. Meeting was adjourned at 6:42. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, November 9th. I'd like to make a note that this is a different day. We usually meet on Tuesday, but that's election day. So we'll be meeting on Wednesday, November 9th at 6:00 p.m. in the East Annex.
Thank you very much, Alderman. Municipal Services Committee?
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is going to be November 9th at 6:00 p.m. here in the East Annex.
Thank you. Judiciary Committee?
Uh, we met on Thursday, October 20th, and we got a few ordinances and damage claims. I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending certain provisions of the city of Blue Island code regarding administration, personnel, and appointment of city officers and officials.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Uh, we have four handicap parking spots. Can we do them all together at once? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve restricting portions of certain streets at 2418 Cochran Street, 2536 Collin Street, 2525 Lewis Street, 12255 Maple Avenue, and 2539 Orchard Street for handicap parking only within the city of Blue Island, Cook County, state of Illinois. I am providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a motion to deny the damage claim 2016, 12351.
Got a motion, we have a second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Question, question.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion to deny the damage claim 2016, 2218.
Got a motion, second by Alderman Johansson. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Poulos.
Aye.
Poulos, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Bellado.
Aye.
Bellado, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Johansson.
Aye.
Johansson, aye. Twelve ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any aldermen and councilor comments? Alderman, Donahue?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to thank our city staff that came to city council tonight, even though the Cubs are playing in the old circus. Thank you to those who came. The extra part is appreciated.
Alderman Pittman?
Yes, I'd like to offer congratulations to Alderman Carr and her husband Steve on their 36th wedding anniversary today.
Alderman Johansson?
Even though Director Hawley's left, I do want to thank him for, on behalf of the people of the 7th Ward. He was out there in storms. He was checking on our water supply and incense. We were pulling branches off in some of the terrible storms over the past several years, and it's a pleasure to work with, and I wish him well in retirement.
Alderman Hawley?
On behalf of the Christmas Light Parade Committee, I'd like to thank everybody who came out and supported our fundraiser on Friday night. Uh, we made over, well, over $2,000 that night. Um, that will go to help pay for, uh, train rides for the kids to keep the, um, different activities free that day for the kids, and also help make the parade a little bit, uh, more... larger, I guess. More larger. Anyway, larger.
Anything else? Any other alderman comment? Got a motion for adjournment? Motion by Alderman Pittman, second by Alderman Slattery. Any questions?
Aye. Alderman Pittman.